Hello and welcome to the August 1st, 2023 Select Board Meeting. The entire board is present, town manager, town clerk, a couple other members of the town government. Let us stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, we have the approval of our meeting minutes from July 18th, 2023.
Now make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll second.
And you approve the discussion? All those in favor? All right, first public comment. All right, I will close the first public comment. We have no reports of committees, no department reports. We have a presentation of the amendments to the land use ordinance by Michael LaRue, Planning Board Chair.
Hi, I'm Michael LaRue, Chair of the Planning Board. Couple things to start off is the definition changes or adding and changes. First is the automotive convenience store and gas station. It's a retail operation that provides both the sale of food and household products along with the sale of petroleum and EV charging stations for vehicular fueling. Next is gas station, an operation that provides the sale of petroleum and EV charging stations for vehicular fueling. We had a change in the definition to automotive service. It's just the addition of this definition excludes automotive convenience stores. And then retail business, we also added this definition excludes automotive convenience stores and gas stations. You can see that we added it to the table for R1 and RCI zones for both the automotive convenience store and gas station. Do you want me to read through all the...
I'd just like to note that where you added it, it was conditional.
Conditional, yes, yeah, sorry. And then we added the automotive convenience store and gas station. All the requirements for that can be no longer, no larger than 3,000 square feet. We want visual screening on three sides of the property must be fully screened at ground level to the abutting properties. All natural vegetation must be eight feet in height at the time of planting and be a minimum of two rows deep planted six feet on center. When abutting a residence, a solid privacy fence or at least five feet in height is required, solid privacy fence of at least five feet in height is required in addition to the landscaping. Free standing lights around the facility shall be dark sky friendly certified and on poles no taller than 15 feet. Canopy lighting for the gas pumps shall not have any spill over lighting onto any abutting property or the public way in which the facility is located. Automotive convenience stores shall not be affiliated with automotive service. Automotive convenience stores shall not be located any closer than 1,000 feet from any other automotive convenience stores. All underground tanks must include a tank alarm system and be designed with a double wall or safer as defined by the Maine Department of Environmental Protection. Automotive convenience stores shall not provide any more parking spaces than required under Article 7, Section 7.8 of the Parking Standards portion of the ordinance. Filling station locations shall be counted towards the required parking requirements. Automotive convenience stores are allowed only on properties that have frontage on Route 9, 4, or 236. Operating hours are to be permitted between 4:00 AM and 10:00 PM, seven days a week. Gas filling may be permitted for 24/7 operation provided all main state requirements are met. Fuel tanks and pumps are to be located no closer than 300 feet to any residential well or public water supply. Dumpsters are to have a set location. All dumpsters are to have covers and fenced around, and a fenced surround. Each station must comply with all state and federal regulations, including inspections. Then down into mixed use, we added, so mixed use shall meet the minimum lot size for residential use, and we added, and require no further minimum lot size for any additional uses in the VC, SCI, and RCI zones. A mixed use shall meet the minimum size lot for residential use plus half the minimum lot size for each additional commercial industrial use in all other zones. For the land use district regulations, we've changed the accessory dwelling units to permits on the AP, LR, and SP zones. All right, residential growth limitation provisions, we struck out D, and then F is accessory dwelling units do not count as a permit issued towards the growth limitations in this section. In the accessory dwelling units, number one, we changed the accessory apartment shall be more than 190 square feet instead of 400. In the marijuana amendments, we updated the definition of marijuana cooperative from two to three or more medical marijuana or adult use cultivators sharing a location as a primary residence in order to conduct marijuana home production. We also added on marijuana caregiver home production that two caregivers who share the same residency may both operate. We struck out the permits and the table, and we struck out the cap. Next is the solar farms. It was 8.37, and it was essential services, and now it's just solar farms. We struck out that one, and then we added, the following requirements are additional to all other requirements of the land use ordinance to be included in the site plan and conditional use. A, a decommissioning plan signed by the party responsible for decommissioning, the landowner, if different, and the state of Maine whose minimum requirements meet the standards here. B, solar farms shall be screened from view by continuous landscaping of plantings of at least six feet in height to cover any open spaces of the fencing along exterior lot lines adjacent to residential properties and all roads. The boundaries of any essential service that borders any road or any abutting lot shall consist of a pollinator buffer, the width of the required setback along that border in addition to any fence that shall be erected. Active vegetation should be used to satisfy these planting requirements where possible. No vegetation shall or fence shall interfere with a required clear sight triangle at a driveway or road intersection. Berms with vegetation are encouraged as a component of any buffer. C, the fencing shall be placed eight inches off the ground to allow for the safe passage of wildlife. The fencing shall be gated at the access point and have a Knox box located for emergency access with tree screening the remainder of the access side of the fencing. D, provide a cost estimate for the construction of the facility as well as the decommissioning of the facility in order to establish a bond letter of credit or other form of surety for the town to hold during the construction process and for the life of the facility toward the decommissioning aspect of the project. E, access to the site shall be a minimum of 20 foot of travel weight and width. F, if lighting is provided at the site, lighting shall be shielded and downcast so the light does not spill onto the adjacent parcel or into the night sky. Motion sensor control is required. And G, a capacity letter for the central main power. Next, on 7.4, we struck out glare and changed it to lighting, struck out the beginning of that, and then added, one, outdoor lighting shall not adversely impact road safety or adjacent properties and uses. Two, exemptions, the following types of lighting are exempt from the standards in the subsection. A, light emitting brightness less than 1,600 lumens. B, string mini lights used in window displays or in trees, bushes, and shrubs as part of the landscaping. C, lighting of approved sports facilities for the duration of events. D, short-term use up to 60 consecutive days of lighting for public festivals, celebrations, and observance of holidays. E, lighting required and regulated by any superior legal jurisdiction. F, lighting controlled by motion-activated sensors in which limit the duration of illumination to less than five minutes after activation. And G, lighting of state, municipal, or other monuments where approved by the code enforcement officer. Three, light shielding, all lighting not otherwise exempted from this shall, A, be fully shielded, meaning fixture constructed, so that no light rays are emitted by the installed fixture at angles above 15 degrees below the horizontal plane, and also so the filament or light source is not visible to the naked eye when viewed from a higher point, viewed from a higher point than the 15 degrees below the horizontal plane of the fixture. B, avoid disability glare, i.e. avoid being a hazard or nuisance to motorists, pedestrians, or neighboring residents. And C, be directed away from adjacent properties and streets, including properties separated from the development site by a street, road, or right-of-way, so that the lighting elements are not exposed to direct view by motorists or sidewalk pedestrians or from adjacent properties. Four, uplighting is prohibited except in cases where the fixture is shielded from the sky by a roof, overhang, or similar structural shield, and where the fixture does not extend beyond the structural shield. Five, correlated color temperature. Lighting must be chosen to minimize the amount of short wavelength light, blue light emitted into the nighttime environment using a correlated color temperature not to exceed 3,000 Kelvin. Color temperatures over 5,000 Kelvin are called cool colors, bluish, while lower color temperatures 2,700 to 3,000 K are called warm colors, yellowish. Next was the village overlay district additional request of 9 Goodwin Street, U4-126, the village commercial zone. We approved that, now it's to you. Article 7 is we changed the fees. The application fee was 200, and we changed that to 750. If you want, I can just read the thing, the whole paragraph?
No, I think you're okay.
Okay. And then, in addition, the applicant shall pay a fee, instead of 250, it's 350 now, per lot or dwelling unit for subdivision with 10 lots or more, and we changed the 400 to 500 per lot for subdivisions with fewer than 10 lots. Okay, moving on to the design guide and standards. This has been a project for a little while, and now it's kind of updated, so now we're trying, we're trying to get it to be in the land use ordinance instead of just a, like a guideline, but just something that has more teeth. Do you want me to go through all of these, or...
I want you to read every single word.
I mean, we added the introduction, we want, trying to make it more pedestrian-friendly, or like the downtown. This is for the village overlay district, Route 9, Route 4, and 236. And it's, we defined what one story is, a couple other things. Materials, textures, and colors, trying to show what we're kind of looking for in the new designs, roof shapes, commercial structures, we kind of have a good idea of what we're looking for for commercial structures, large-scale structures, service area and drive-throughs, parking lots, all that has been added and adjusted. Then we also added some not acceptable characteristics for building designs. Just a lot of pictures. Onings, just kind of like what the town's looking for for the onings and canopies, signage, there's more stuff for the signs, what's acceptable, what's not acceptable. Yep, and that's it, unless I'm missing anything. James, is there anything else?
No, just the, we had a version sent out Friday based off the meeting we had Thursday, received some comments, and our attorney has reviewed it as well, and starting to make some changes based off of legal, so that's why you see some changes, and it'll continue to be reviewed by legal to be finalized for the August 15th meeting.
So, right now, thank you very much for the presentation, appreciate it. So it's been presented to us, I imagine we're going to have a meeting about it, and then we have to have a public hearing about it before we actually put it on to the ballot, or no?
No, the public hearing's after it's on the ballot.
Okay, okay. I think you're all set.
Thanks, thank you.
All right, so are we supposed to take a vote on this today, or are we still having a meeting about this in the future?
The one, the one thing that I'll point out as a thing that I see as unresolved, there's some back and forth about potentially having the convenience store's size range from 2,500 square feet, and if it's more, it needs further planning board review. Our legal recommended just putting in a minimum size, and again, the discussions were...
Minimum size?
A minimum, maximum size. Yep, maximum size. So, discussions were anywhere between 2,500 square feet to 5,000 square feet. Anything over 3,000 square feet does require a higher level of planning board review, your site plan review, so it does have that natural, you know, anything bigger than that requires site plan review, but is there any desire to see the, I mean, is there any preference on what the...
During the meeting on Thursday, you know, when we talked about this, I thought that, it was brought up that was a state had a standard of the 2,500 feet, was that...
And that was just the average.
That was the average, okay. I don't have a problem with the 3,000 square feet, you know, I think anything like this, you know, should have a site if you wanted anyway, so, is it 3,000 square feet, you know, triggers a site review? I'm all for that.
For the record, the Cumberland Farms, they said, was measured out to be 2,700, so, and that's very decent in size. The only thing that I wanted to get any clarity on is, we had discussed the EV option, petroleum and EV. This version says petroleum and EV charging stations are considered gas stations, automotive convenience stores. Should that not be or? I mean, we don't have standards for EV charging stations yet, so they're basically being classified as, as gas stations until we create those ordinances, but until then, shouldn't it just be petroleum or EV charging stations?
Yep.
Yeah, and/or, I mean, it could have both, or it could have either, but if we have and, we're, by, by the ordinance, we're making them have both.
Yeah, that's something that we talked about in Thursday's meeting about, you know, requiring, requiring them to install EV charging stations, and, you know, as I pointed out then, is, I think, I think you're going to be seeing more businesses start putting those in, as I don't know if we necessarily have to mandate that we put it in an automotive convenience store, it'd be nice, but, but we had that discussion also about, is if it's just an EV charging station, then, you know, it doesn't meet all the other requirements, you don't have fuel pumps, you don't have tanks, and things like that, so...
Well, it also brings to mind that if you, in Saco, and they have the McDonald, the Plaza, the Shaw's Plaza next to McDonald's, they just have a bunch of charging stations in that plaza, like, as like parking state, you know, just come and park, charge, leave, you know? If someone wanted to do that in, you know, in Burwick, you know, would it be considered a gas station? Someone just wanted to add some EV charging stations to their parking lot, would it be become, would it, would it turn their otherwise normal business into a automotive convenience store? So, might be something to clarify the language on, at least.
I can, yeah, yep.
Generally don't want to force people to go EV, but you also don't want to limit people's ability to go EV.
No, there's been some question about, you know, why do we need this now? I think it was back in the beginning of March, when it was first brought forward, there was a rumor, a story of a possible gas station going on in Route 4, started all this, and a lot of work has gone into this over the last few months. And rather than, you know, just prohibit a gas station from going in, I think this is a much better way of going about it, is making sure that if something were to go in, we have it in place so that people know ahead of time what we're looking for. So, I think, I think this is a good addition to the land use ordinance.
I agree, mainly because I don't, you know, I hate being reactive, I want to be proactive, I don't want to wait for a gas station to go in and then have to worry about all the things that we didn't get under the, you know, under the land use ordinance, when we can do it now and hopefully head off any problems that might come in the future. So, James, are we looking for a vote, or are we doing a meeting to discuss this more in further?
No, I don't believe so. Anything that you want to see in the final version, that would be the time to, I mean, if you think of anything in the meantime, there's, just, sometimes this week would be preferable, just let me know. But otherwise, it's still under legal review, and you'll have a final draft in front of you for the next meeting.
And then at that meeting, we'll either approve or reject it. If it's approved, it'll go to the ballot, we'll have a public hearing about it.
It'll go to the ballot whether you guys recommend it or not.
Okay.
So you'll either recommend a yes or a no vote for the ballot.
Got it, okay.
I want to comment on the design standards also, you know, this is building on something that's been in place for the downtown district for, well, five years now or so?
Yep.
And basically, what we're doing is saying that, you know, we have these designs that we want to see downtown here, and this is just bringing it forward so any other developers that come in will see that we want not just the downtown, but other parts of Burwick to not look like standards in Peabody, Route 1 down in Massachusetts, where all you have are flat roofs, single-story, you know, fast food convenience stores, gas stations, and, you know, we want something a little bit better than that for Burwick, and I think this is a good place to start with that.
To maintain our rustic charm, as it were.
And John, I agree with you, we don't want the city development, although I do find this pretty restrictive. If you're a developer and you're coming in, some of the guidelines, and I mean in general, not just the gas station, are pretty restrictive, you can't have a roof this size, what if it's your neighbor, and a lot of it is based on particular opinion, whoever's sitting on the planning board at that particular year, because a lot of things that you say in here is can't influence the neighbor, can't bother the neighbor, well, who makes that decision?
Yep.
Who, who says that today, your light is okay, but then five years from now, someone else buys that house, and they come to the planning board and say, well, it says here, it's not really clear, it just says, you know, if it's disruptive to the neighbor. Who determines whether it's destructive to the neighbor or not? That's pretty, that's pretty vague.
Well, at some point, a person is, has to make the determination, because, you know, we can, the, the more stringent we make the standards, the, you know, the harder it is to apply.
Oh, I think the standards are pretty stringent to begin with.
No, I understand, like, if, if we don't have a person behind them actually making the final determination, then we have to come down to like the final minutia of everything, like, this goes from being a three-page amendment to being a 25-page amendment, because we have to quantify everything down to the last...
I'm not saying quantify it, I'm saying that you shouldn't have something in there that is specifically based on the opinion of a neighbor, because that neighbor can change at any time.
Well, the neighbor doesn't determine it, the, the planning board, the code enforcement...
Well, it says here, that it have no shell light that, where was it? I think I put an X by it. Who determines? Avoid disability glare, avoid being a hazard or nuisance to motorists, pedestrians, or neighboring residents is one of them, and I saw it again somewhere else, it's who determines that?
If, yeah, click.
So that would be a code enforcement officer issue, but like what you're saying with the signs, if a sign was approved by us, by the planning board, and five years later someone else buys it, that sign would still be okay, the only change would be is if they were to update that sign, it would just have to be updated with our land use ordinance if, if it's changed at that point.
Right, and, and understand, well, I would think they'd be grandfathered in.
Yeah.
I'm a business, I'm coming in, I'm going to move right next to your house. I meet all the other regulations, I got my sign up and everything, and the neighbor says, I don't want that business there, that glare, that light's bothering me, I'm going to tell you that before you even go to the planning board, I'm going to put a stop to this.
Well, they, we've had this issue in the past, because, I mean, we have the, the marijuana grow operations...
That's exactly what I was thinking, yes.
...out on 236, one of the regulations is about smell, you know, which smell is entirely subjective.
That's it.
You're right.
It's subjective.
So, the neighbor's saying, it smells, it smells all the time, and we send down code enforcement, and they go, it doesn't smell to me, you know, I don't, I don't smell anything, it smells pretty normal, you know? It comes down to code enforcement and what the average person would perceive, you know? If one person says, I don't want this light in my neighborhood, code enforcement goes out and says, well, they meet all the regulations, they're not breaking any rules, you can still consider it a nuisance, and it's still not in violation of the code, as long as reasonable people on the board and code enforcement agree.
I can check with legal to strengthen it or to strike it, because A and C, if A and C are met, then B is kind of irrelevant.
Doesn't need to be there, right, right, that's what I'm saying.
I mean, if it meets the angle and it's shielded properly, then there wouldn't be a...
That's a specific restriction that you can follow measure as opposed to something that is subjective.
And again, the one, the one thing I brought up in, in the workshop, going back to the design guide and standard ordinance, and, and again, I love everything that's in there, and it kind of piggybacks what Lynn was bringing up now, is I love the recommended, I don't know if I am strongly for the not acceptable stuff that's listed in there.
Yeah, there's a lot of that, I agree.
And that's, there's a lot of not acceptable, not acceptable, and I think that's where you limit somebody where you could just recommend what you want, and again, it comes down to planning board enforcing that anyways. And again, it comes down to planning board enforcing that anyways.
But we're already doing that in the downtown area. You know, we're already doing those regulations in the downtown area. All we're doing is expanding them into other areas of the town. We're already saying that, you know, these are the roof lines we want, these are the awnings we want, these are the windows we want.
Correct. But if we're going to put it into a law, then into the L U O as it, that's where I'm like, that not acceptable just says, you know, just saying this isn't going to be accepted. And again, we can influence and say this is what we want, you know, I just think it's, and again, I'm not swayed super hard one way or another, it's just something that stood out to me when I looked at it before last week, it's something I brought up last week, and something that's here.
How would you, how would, well.
I would just leave recommended.
Well, the whole, the whole point is that this is already a recommendation.
Correct.
Right now, as it stands, the design guide is a recommendation, it is basically like, here's what the planning board is looking for, and you can take it, but you could also ignore it completely and still try to get everything passed, and it's just.
Correct.
Recommendation, it has no, well, as Mike said, no teeth. It doesn't, it doesn't, you know, you can still have, you still present it as absurd and ridiculous as you want to, you know?
But the planning board is still going to.
The planning board's still going to be the final say anyway, so, again, and like I said, that's not, that's not going to sway me one way or another on it's in there, it's just something that.
The whole point of this is to accept it as part of the land use ordinance. If, if the terms recommended, not acceptable, or as a concept, doesn't work for you, what's the alternative? To not have it be part of the land use ordinance at all, and just keep it as a guide? Or to change the wording, to strike out not acceptable and just have the recommended?
That's, that's kind of where I was leaning. You know, that, that would be my one thing. But again, I'm not hard put on it one way or another. It's not going to, you know, leaving it in there is not going to deter me from saying, "Hey, I like this, and I think it should be part of the L U O." It's just something is, that I would caution, that I just think leaving the recommended in there, and maybe striking the not acceptable, because who knows what changes? And some of the not acceptable, again, could be a little subjective when we look at what's there, or it's a hard limit, and maybe something 10 years from now comes into that, it's not acceptable now, hey, this is some, actually something that we like, or this is what is in there. But again, I'm not hard, I'm not hard put one way or the other. You know, it was just, it was just a watch out that kind of, kind of stuck out.
I, I, I understand what you're saying. I, I, as an example, I, there's this doctor, and he's, he's trying to define, like, what the best kind of diet is, and he can't respond to every new diet that comes out, because there's, you know, a thousand a day that come out, you can't respond to every single one, so you have to make guidelines of what does make a good diet, as opposed to, and, you know, what makes it, you know, instead of responding to every new possible, because you're right, there's essentially an infinite amount of permutations that would be considered not acceptable. So having that as a, as a predetermined thing is a little, I mean, it, it, it just doesn't cover all the bases, because we don't know what's going to come around the corner.
And that was pretty much my point.
Yeah.
And again, it's not, not swaying me one way or another, it's just something that kind of just stuck out.
We just look at the differences between McDonald's when we were kids and McDonald's today, you know? Who would have ever thought that that's what that would transform into? Can't predict the future. James, has the lawyer looked at the acceptable, not acceptable definitions in the design guide?
They have, I mean, if you want to, because this could be not recommended, if that's, if that's what the board prefers, and I believe the intent can still remain, if an application comes in and they do not meet this as an, as an ordinance, if they're still, if they're going ahead and, and blowing through the not recommended, that there would be enough teeth to negotiate or deny application until it comes into somewhat, some compliance. I mean, it, it would, if it doesn't meet a not, if it meets, or it doesn't meet one not acceptable, but it meets everything else, the board still can have, you know, some ability to, to approve it. It does have that flexibility.
So would the terms preferred and not recommended be more, more reasonable?
Overall, this, this, this provides a supplement to the existing performance standards, that the performance standards has a, you know, the, the new developments need to have respect to the bulk and size and.
The character.
Performance standards are the hard draw line anyways, right?
And this gives the images to what they're, you know, the performance standards. So I think saying recommended, not recommended, or preferred, not recommended, I can run that by our turn in.
So this is for anything moving forward, it wouldn't be for anything that's already?
Everything already in is already grandfathered in.
Yeah.
And, well, technically, anything that's approved before the November vote would still be Caddick, would still be, would still be not, this would not be applicable to.
So let me ask you this, the new, the new edge over here, these new facilities where the, the butcher shop isn't all of that, would that be recommended under this?
Yeah, I think they've already used a lot of this.
Yeah, I think this already means.
Well, because I'm looking at the not acceptable, straight here, and it looks very similar to what we have all across the street, so I'm just wondering, did it pass?
It would.
Okay, because page 10, I'm looking at two buildings that, you know, have multiple businesses in one building with glass out front.
But that, because that is an existing building that they rehabbed, it's not a new building. It was, you know, that, that's part of the difference is, is where it was an existing structure that they were rehabbing.
So this is applicable only to new buildings coming in, not to any, if somebody wanted to buy a building like this on Route 4, this wouldn't apply to them, because the building already exists?
Essentially, yes.
That's be my take on it.
If the building, if the building's already built in there, then, I mean, yes, we can't, we can't be like, well, you have a new owner, so now you have to tear it down and rebuild it.
No, I'm asking, because, I mean, this is pretty restrictive, I, I don't want to discourage people from coming in, we do have a lot of empty buildings, from coming in and revitalizing some of those buildings.
Yeah.
And putting businesses in them.
But then again, it, it, we want the businesses to come in, but as I said, I don't want it to look like Route 1 down in Peabody, Mass, either.
Well, you can limit that by the number of buildings, but I, you know, we want, we want to encourage people to come in and, and for economic development. And then it says here, only on Route 4, 236, and Route 9? So if I wanted to, you know, on that back road that goes to, goes to the school, on Cranberry Meadow, if I wanted to put up a, a convenience store there, these wouldn't apply? Because it wouldn't be the front of the building, wouldn't fit any one of those.
It, well, a convenience store wouldn't be allowed in Cranberry Meadow Road because of the zoning ordinance.
No, they are.
It would be.
They are, village convenience store is. Village convenience store is allowed, under condition.
A neighborhood store, not a convenience.
Correct.
It'd be considered a family grocery or something like that.
So they could put that in, and these rules wouldn't apply to them?
Correct.
But they would still have other standards that they would have to meet that are in the.
That is correct. The standards and guidelines is only for the Village Overlay District, Route 4, 236, and Route 9.
Why?
Because those are the more industrial roads that we have.
Industrial, commercial.
That's where most of our commercial and industrial zones are.
And in terms of the other areas, a lot of it is R2, R3.
Right.
If they want to put a business out there, which I don't recommend, but they could, it would have, it would be, it'd still be conditional under the.
It's all conditional.
Under the planning board, they'd still have to approve the design and everything like that, and it would still have to be in compliance with the neighbors around it, you know, couldn't be some monstrous thing in the middle of a neighborhood, because we already have that as ordinance, it couldn't be, couldn't be some bright beacon of light surrounding, you know, that spills onto three other farms in the area, you know?
Yeah, we already have in the ordinance that, you know, things have to be compatible with the neighborhood, correct?
Yep.
So.
Right.
So you couldn't put a Walmart in R3.
Well, no, of course not, but, the other thing here on H, it says, parking, parking standards portion of the store shall not provide any more parking spaces than required under Article 7, Section 7.8 of the parking standards, shall not provide any more parking spaces. So if I own a bigger lot, I can't add more parking?
If the lot is already there, then you're fine.
But I'm saying, say I buy a piece of property on Route 4, and I put a building within the guidelines of all of this, and I measure it out, and I want to put 12 parking spaces.
But thi- this only applies to the automotive and the gas stations.
Right, so it's convenience.
Yeah.
Right, so I'm, I'm putting that up, and I, and I have, I got eight acres, I'm going to put a small building out front, maybe a Napa or something, and you're saying that, I just don't understand the reasoning behind limiting the number of parking spaces.
Because we don't want huge amounts of impervious surface areas.
We have guidelines for parking lots.
And things like that.
That just references through the, the ordinance that has to go by those guidelines.
Right, those, those ordinances are already in the.
Yep.
And the parking ordinance is, I believe they're proportional to the size of the building. So if you want to have more parking, you can have more parking, your building has to reflect that. If you're putting a tiny little, you know, hut out there as your, as your storefront, you can't have, you're surrounded by 36 parking spaces, you need to have an appropriate amount of parking spaces for the size of the building that you're putting up.
And so if you have a factory or something like that, it depends on how many people work there, the square footage of the building, and that type of thing.
I'm thinking on 236, that new marijuana place.
Silver?
Yeah, the, the one just before the transfer station.
Yeah.
Right. I want to say there's got to be eight or nine spots in there.
Yeah, it, it was whatever was allowed per the land use ordinance is what they have.
It's determined by the square footage of the business and the type of business, too. You know, if you have a, a convenience store, people are coming and going, coming and going, it's not the same as if you need long-term parking. There's one of the things we don't want is to end up with the parking lots, like over at Walmart, and Home Depot, and places like that, that 95% of the time, 80% of the parking lot's empty, and sitting there, and all you have is a huge expanse of impervious surface, you know, dealing with your runoff and your water and all that stuff.
Right, and I, and I get that, that makes sense, you're talking about a large parking lot, but you're talking about this, this is an automotive convenience store, so you have, what, one, two, maybe three employees? That's three spots. So now somebody's coming in, you know, it's a convenience store, you're coming in and out, now you've limited them to, what, four parking spots for customers?
Well, not exactly, because you have, if, if the ordinance says that the, that the spots for fueling count as parking spaces, so if you have, you know, if you have, you know, four pumps, on each side, you have, you know, so you're talking about like eight spaces right there, just right from, from those spots for customers.
For the gas pumps?
Yeah, well, the gas pumps count as parking spaces.
What if it was like tri axles or dump trucks or something like that, would they have different spots for them?
I don't think so. I think they have, I think.
They're one of the.
I think a parking.
It's not going to fit in the same spot. Right?
So with the parking lot standards, it's, it's for everyday passenger vehicles, it's, if you go to Cumberland Farms, there's no real designated parking for those big commercial vehicles. Like, if a refueling truck came up, there's no, they'd park near the tanks.
Well, they don't have as big of an area either, I mean, right?
Well, they're at 2,700 square feet, so, what, it's 300, up to 300 square feet difference. I mean, that's, I guess I don't really know what the question is at that point.
Are those trucks going to be able to get gas there and park?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, definitely.
It'll be wide enough for them?
It'll be accessible, oh, yeah.
That area, so that's one spot.
Well, the islands.
It's probably two for a regular car.
Yeah, they'd take up two spots on the island, just like at Cumberland Farms, they'd take up that one pump, and then if their trailer's behind it, they'd probably take up the room on the next pump.
I have another question. On number four, accessory dwelling unit, I'm just asking this question. The, okay, we've changed, we want to change from 400 to 190. Are there, I know that's a state, what the state has allowed, does the state have any other regulations that we haven't put on here?
I'm unsure.
You're not sure?
I'm unsure on that.
If the state does have other requirements, then they're automatically in place for us. They, they supersede our ordinances anyway.
One of the things we had heard was that they add a lot of sheds, so if you put 190 square feet, you know, a little house, and then you, how, is there, can you add as many sheds as you want?
There's an ordinance for sheds.
Is there? How many can you have?
I'd want to say it's like one or two.
Okay.
Off, off the top of my head, it's kind of, I'm just, but it's a, I think it's a matter of square footage on that.
Okay.
It also depends on your lot size, if you can actually fit it, because sheds can't be like right on the property lines either.
Right. Like, if you're trying to throw, if you're trying to throw a shipping container out, you're only allowed one, and then you have to get conditional use for the others, if you're trying to get more than that.
That was just one of the things that was mentioned the other night, is that they add a lot of sheds, that, that's the only reason I'm mentioning it.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I recently asked Irish about, you know, if there was a minimum size to a shed that you need a building permit, and she said, "No, no, no matter how small it is, you still need to get a building permit and meet all the requirements and setbacks."
And, and people aren't supposed to be living in sheds either, that doesn't count towards an accessory dwelling unit. Just keep that in mind, too.
Well, 190 square feet, they're going to be put something.
Well, that's an accessory dwelling unit, though, it's, I mean, I've seen tiny houses that are smaller than that. I mean, they don't need much, but they don't, they also have to conform to having septic and water, you're right, where the smaller ones usually don't.
Under the Marijuana Cooperative, what's the reasoning behind moving it from two to three, if it's a private home, private residency?
So the state allows two people in a house to do it. Right now, we're stricter than that, so we are changing that to be up with state standards.
They allow two, and this says that you're moving it to three?
So this is for the term Marijuana Cooperative.
Right.
So the definition of cooperative is three or more.
Yep.
Where with the town, before this, it was two or more, so you could only have one at a house. Now, this makes it so we're allowing two to a house.
So if, under our current standards, you and your partner can't both share a unit, shared dwelling, and do this, because you'd be considered a cooperative.
Right, and cooperatives aren't allowed.
So under this new amendment, you and your partner would be able to, and there's no third person can come in.
That's correct.
Yeah. So, father, sons, mom, daughters, partners.
Yeah.
So they can both have.
They can both, they can both have.
In the same residence.
And be in the same residence.
So that's twice as much produced in the same home.
Yep. Yes.
I just have a question on solar. How, do you know the lifespan of a solar panel? Just a, just wondering.
I believe it's 20, 25 years.
That's the current.
The newer ones, they're talking about 30 years or more.
Yeah.
And so, that's why we have the, the decommissioning section in here, as that's been, like, brought, as a concern that's been brought up in the past, because people are going to build solar farms and just use them for 20 years and then just leave, just abandon them where they are.
How many do we have now, solar farms?
We have two built, two approved, and one that was a smaller one that was in front of planning board, and they.
They tabled it from there, so.
And one of them's waiting for capacity, actually begging both of them are waiting for capacity, that, that did not build.
And I, I just want to talk about that, is, you know, we talked, one of the things we talked about was having a, putting a cap on the number of solar facilities in, in Berwick, and right now, is, from what I understand, is Central Maine Power doesn't have the capabilities of adding any more on, and that's why, you know, we need that, they would need that capacity letter from CMP before they could get approved, so that is the cap we have right now.
Yeah.
And it would cost, you know, somebody probably hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars to upgrade any lines, so we basically, we do have a cap.
Yeah.
But I, I've argued before about the caps, I don't, I'm not a fan of putting caps on it, is, I don't think it's going to be that big a problem, mostly because is, any valuable land that is available for it is being bought up and made into house lots anyways, so, is personally, I'd rather see the solar farms than the house lots. But that's my opinion.
Any other questions?
Any other questions for Mike at this time?
No.
I was trying to think of one just to get him to have to walk back.
I'm sure we will have much more discussion and, you know, wording changes and things like that before everything is a hundred percent finalized. Thank you for taking, for presenting and taking all the questions.
Thank you.
It's very helpful, and I'm sure we will see you again shortly. So, yeah, moving on, Nick. We have no unfinished business at this time. We have Tom Andrew report.
I'm gonna rip my documents real quick. I have a lot of paperwork. Glad I found it. Okay, tax commitment will be next meeting, August fifteenth, so when we set our tax rate. Don't wanna curse it, but I might be cursing. I think numbers look pretty good. So numbers will be finalized. Have that for the next meeting. Personnel policy was revamped. We went through the whole document with HR consultant Betsy Alton, and the documents being reviewed by our attorney now, and once it finishes review, it'll be in front of the board for your, your review. Working on another addition to the transfer station fee schedule, and I'll have that in front of you for the next meeting. We're talking about yard brush. Other municipalities charge for it. It's a major expense for the transfer station. Looking at maybe ten or fifteen bucks just to recover some costs. Again, that's yard, yard debris. And again, it's, we have due set, come and pick it up, and it's, it's expensive. Just as a note, we had a request to, for the town to adopt Chandler's Way. That's off of Knox Lane. The road was recently paved, and we have some engineering reports. Jody's looked at it. So the intent is to have that on for the November ballot.
Is it a cul-de-sac?
It is.
It is a cul-de-sac.
It is a cul-de-sac. The question is about, with, with the, way the ordinance is written, is that if it was a subdivision that was approved before two thousand and nineteen and is considered active, and the discussions with, with planning is if it's considered act, with S and P D C about it being considered active, it has a vacant lot on it. Also, we had a construction escrow going back many years as well. So I would recommend to consider it still active and applicable to be adopted by the town, but that's obviously up to voters, of the board to recommend it and the voters.
The two houses that are on Knox that are not part of the town because Knox ends at Tiffany Lane, would that also be part of that adoption?
It'd be the segment from Knox.
So all the way from Tiffany Lane down to Chandler's Way? Just looking for.
Who pays for it now?
It's maintained privately.
Oh.
It was.
You say, you say it's active because there's an open lot on it. Is, that, that's the open lot that they've been holding as an access into the backland, correct?
Correct.
Because we, we looked at, the town looked at that piece of property at one time when we were looking at doing the fire station out off of Pine Hill. And we talked to that owner, and I believe that that one lot that's not built on is they've kept that open because it's an access into the back of the rest of the lot. You know, that they have plans on possibly developing in the future. You know, I was one of the ones that pushed through the no longer taking on cul-de-sacs and private roads and things. And I, I still, I wanna, I'm gonna hold to my guns on that, is I'm gonna recommend we not take it, you know, because it's, it costs the town more money than we get out of it. So, like I said, that's my personal take on it.
You get a lot of money out of Fox Ridge, and it's not done there.
Well, Fox Ridge is different because it actually, all the roads intersect with each other. You can go from one side to the other side.
Right, it's not a cul-de-sac.
Before you guys keep talking about it, I'm gonna recuse myself.
No, we'll have to have a special about it later, but yeah, Fox Ridge is just, is all straight lines. You can cut right through it. But the cul-de-sacs are different. You know, you have to go down them, you can't come back through them, and.
Actually, this one you can. It's a full circle.
We have a full circle opening up.
Yeah. Which one?
Links.
Links.
Well, that's what a cul-de-sac is.
Well, it's not the open circle, it's the around the island. So it's a straight, straight.
So, yeah, that's, the, the policy is just, yeah, I was in planning and definitely, it's a great policy that, you know, if we're having a hard time maintaining the roads we already have, we shouldn't take any more roads until we at least catch up in our paving plan. But again, yeah, that's, that the definition is anything, like I said, before two thousand and nineteen, considered active. So that question is, probably a question for legal on what, you know, how, how do we put the hard line on what's considered active? Should it really, literally be under construction? And I checked with S and P D C, they had a couple, they had different opinions on it, and I can check with our legal, so.
Hypothetically, even, even if we, let's say, let's say four of us say we don't, we don't, we don't recommend it, does it still go to the voters? And they still make the final decision? Or does it die there?
Have to look at the process.
I mean, cause, I, when in doubt, I always give it to the voters, let them make the decision, you know? If they wanna spend the money to take care of it, then it's up to them, you know? It's not our, it's not our, it's not our money. It's the voters' money.
I'll have to double-check what the formal process for the road adoption request is.
Okay. Get back to us.
Last thing I have. We have a request to spend five hundred dollars for beautification out of the Tiff funds. This is for the small triangle next to Spencer Matthews where the Legion put up their, our car sign area, that, that area. Got a couple volunteers spruce up the place a bit. There was an overgrown tree there that was removed. So they're asking for four hundred, five hundred dollars to plant some perennials in there. And I just, this is Drew McCormick, and they've been involved with some beautification downtown. And if you have volunteers willing to do the work, I think it's money well spent.
Yeah, it's time to get rid of that shrubbery. It's overgrown and fallen into the road a few times, but.
Do you need, do you need a motion and a vote on that one?
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the five hundred dollars out of the Tiff fund for the beautification down at the Triangle by Spencer Matthews.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
What's five hundred dollars, what are they putting down there?
Perennials.
That's a lot of perennials.
Well, no, so they have to remove the shrubs and trees or whatever.
And I'm assuming the mulch and everything else that goes with it, too?
Yeah, a few things I'd donate, like to pick up some plants from the greenhouse, as well as a few bags of compost to jumpstart things.
And that's up to five hundred. They don't have to spend all of it, right?
Up to five hundred, yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
That completes my report.
All right. All right, done. Psych Board Communications. We have an invitation to attend a, essentially a municipal conference program in South Portland on September fourteenth. We also all received invitations to go visit Nassau and take a tour around there as members of the community and see the good works that they do. Accounts payable, where are we at here? All right. Payroll warrant number five from July twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, the amount of ninety-one thousand, three hundred, twenty dollars, twenty-one cents. Payroll warrant number six from July twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, the amount of one thousand, nine hundred, thirty-six, thirty-three dollars and sixty-six cents. Accounts payable warrant number seven from August first, two thousand and twenty-three, the amount of nine hundred, five thousand, eight hundred, ninety dollars and sixty-two cents. I make the motion that we pay our bills.
You second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right, all good there. That education one always gets, hits hard, doesn't it? All right, new business, Lawn Chairs, special event permit request, Envision Burwick. Jeremy, go. I choose you.
Hello, folks. Have you had a chance to look over this? Lawn Chairs is August nineteenth this year with a rain date of August twentieth. We have a, a robust event that we're very excited about. We have a makers market out here on this side of the delta, as they would call it. On this side, we have quite, quite a few of our town organizations, including Legion, the PTO, library, all, all with booths, interactive booths, and a lot of fun stuff happening. We also have bands and acts as previously. We are shutting down both, both Sullivan and Rochester Streets with the cooperation of police and fire. We've been making this plan with them from the beginning. By not doing two dates this year, it provided a lot more buy-in. So we feel really good about it, raised terrific amount of money from, from our partners, our sponsors. So we're grateful, and we think it's, as always, a really, our eyes on the prize of a community building project that brings us together, sets up civic pride, gives us something to look forward to every year that's, that's Burwick's special. I'm here to answer any questions.
I have a couple for you.
Sure.
All right. So Rochester Street and Sullivan Street are gonna be shut off. From what point? The back of the town hall, is that where the cutoff is gonna be?
Yes, yes, just past.
Okay. And obviously, the rest is the, before the intersection.
Yes. And they, they, there was quite a bit of energy put into the, the plan for how everything would be rerouted in the most intelligent and useful way. So that, you know, again, this isn't stuff, we didn't go to them and post, this is how we'd do it. Obviously, we relied on the expertise of, of, you know, our police and fire to, to tell us what they believed was going to be the way to most effectively make this festival.
Where is gonna be most of the parking located?
Really good question. We, let me say that I think we are going to be able to use, at least for our vendors and our acts and everybody who's volunteering, the lot across the street. We've been in touch with those folks, and because now that's, that is available, that will open that up for, for everybody who's working the event, in which case, the lot over here becomes open for, for additional parking. And we would also use the lot across the street for handicap parking, so that anybody can park even closer needs handicap parking, and then we just let them through.
The, the beer garden, they don't need a special permit for that? Cause they're still selling on property rights?
It is, well, so the, because it is attached to the property, that's how this works. And, and we, we have worked with, I forget the bureau, the state bureau, but we work with them every year to set this up. And we work hand in hand, obviously, with Corner Point to make this happen. But because you open the door to Corner Point and the beer garden is right there, it makes it, it makes it very doable. Obviously, were they, if, if Corner Point was not interested in doing this, we would come up with a different plan, but it would require more infrastructure. This, this makes it very easy.
So a question on the handicap. So how is the, if this is closed from here and here, and you're saying the parking over here is gonna be the handicap, how do they access it?
Can you use the back way in yet?
Yeah.
Awesome, perfect.
They're gonna use the back.
The police would let them through, yeah.
Perfect.
Okay. And you're gonna have signage and everything moving people?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And, and officers stationed.
Okay.
I imagine you're paying for the overtime and such?
But I, you know what, I, I think the visibility, honestly, to have, you know, fire trucks there, to have, have, you know, we, our, our public works trucks are gonna be used to block streets. And I think that that, and I see that in Summersworth at festivals, to have that visibility where, where, where our officers and our fire department and our public works vehicles are there, that's great stuff. And it gives people an opportunity to interact with, you know, people who work and are part of our town. And I think that that becomes more important as the event becomes part of the DNA of Burwick. Because that, that's how this stuff works. In my opinion, in order to have good vibes, for lack of a better term, between sort of the citizens and, 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 and employees and people who are part of the town in that way, that visibility is really, really, it's important. And like last year, we put it together with, with the police department to last minute, and we had, we, we were hiring officers from, from other towns, which was great. But I'm really glad this year we were able to, to put it in front of them early enough to get our officers, you know, here during the summer, which obviously, it's, it's a tough time. But I think it's, I think it's important, and I think it's really good. I'm really happy about that.
Another question. So you're saying the fire truck and a town police vehicle is gonna be somewhere stationed down here? The reason why I'm thinking that, is there, is there gonna be a general, what happens if August nineteenth turns out to be a hundred degrees? Is there gonna be like a first aid station somewhere around here? Because the roads are blocked off, so people can't drive down.
Everything will be, so we're there to be an emergency, obviously. This is the very first thing that was considered, is how do emergency vehicles get through? So because we don't wanna block somebody's ability to get in, in an ambulance to a hospital, right? But in addition to that, and that, that has been part of the planning and consideration from the beginning, as I understand it, we actually have an ambulance stationed at the event now as well.
Okay.
So, you know, if somebody's gonna get a heat stroke or something like that, we have an EMT onsite at the event.
Yeah, that was actually gonna be my question when it brought up, because I was gonna say, it looks like even though Rochester Street's closed off, we still left the beer garden, the tents, everything off to the side. It looks like there's still that emergency access lane coming right down the street.
Right. And I'm not saying necessarily you need to pull an ambulance in there, but you start to get, some of our seniors there start to feel too much heat and whatnot. Is there a designated sign or, you know?
What we did last year, what we'll do again this year is the lobby becomes our go-to air-conditioned space for seniors. And, and, you know, part of what we're talking to volunteers about this time, because we were actually expanding our volunteer pool this year, which I'm thrilled about, is keeping an eye on those folks and, and knowing, you know, how, how to say, you know, you look warm, why don't you come on into the lobby with me and let's cool off and get your drink or whatever? So that we, you know, again, based on, based on the weather of the summer.
May not be an issue.
Maybe that's not gonna be an issue, but it's always good to have our eyes on those.
Right. Yeah. You might need umbrellas.
Umbrellas are always a good choice. Any other questions for Jeremy?
I think it looks good.
I make a motion to approve the special event permits.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? So, like last year, after the event's over, I want you to come back, tell us all the good work you did, in case any of us missed it. I want you to come back, let everybody know how good it was, and where you can improve, and what, what plans are for next year.
Absolutely.
Okay?
Absolutely. I already got some big ideas for next year. And I will ask, if, if any of you were not there last year, have you watched the, the video that sort of represents? But, you know, I think you get a good taste of, of what we did and what, what the spirit is. And we just wanna expand it. We're really making an effort this year to, to draw a crowd for our vendors. And I think that, you know, we'll see what happens. There's always gonna be room for improvement, but finding a way to make this work for people to say, I vended it at bringing lawn chairs to Sullivan Square. to Sullivan Square and I sold out by halfway through or whatever, that's the goal, you know?
I, I just wanna add that, you know, this is the third year that they've done this. Um, it gets better every year, but is, the amount of time that the volunteers, Envision Berwick and the volunteers put into this is incredible. They started planning this almost immediately after.
I was gonna say, it's like a week after last year.
And, uh, and, you know, the, like I said, the amount of time that these people put into it to pull this off is just amazing and I just wanna, you know, make sure that you publicly thank.
That, well, it's, it's, there are, there are, thank you for saying so and, and, you know, I'm, I'm the face in front of you talking about it, but there are a handful of people that, that make this happen and, and without them.
Five of you guys, you know, carry the biggest load.
Absolutely, incredible.
Alright, well, we'll see you shortly then.
Thank you. Do I have a moment for, um, to put on a different hat as a citizen and just, just, uh, ask a question and throw something out, public comment wise?
You can wait till the second public comment. We gotta get through the other things.
We, we will be much longer with this.
Yeah. Alright, we have a poll permit from CMP.
This is a request to add a pole on the corner of Little River Road and Birchcroft to service a new house.
That's the existing pole.
I've often asked, what happens if we say no?
And those people just don't get power.
I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion that, uh, we, uh, give the poll permit for the pole at the corner of, uh, Birchcroft and Little River Road.
A second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? New poll. Alright, um, no quitclaim deeds, no abatements. I'm gonna move up other business and non-agenda items. We have a, uh, alcohol, uh, permit, it's an application for license for an incorporated civic organization. James, what?
This is a, a event request for, uh, it's like a mobile, um, bartender service. Uh, this is for an event, um, at the Dunn Farm event venue for August twelfth. Uh, they're doing a cornhole tournament and serving drinks by a licensed and insured bartender. So, it's similar, they've, um, they've had, they've had an event before the board before and this is just for this, this, uh, new cornhole event, it appears to be a charity event. Just need your approval so the state can grant their license.
I make the motion that we approve the one-day, uh, license, uh, for the Lions Cornhole for the Cure.
A second.
Any further discussion?
So, uh, it says here that, will dancing be part of the event? No.
No.
What happens if they violate?
Well, according to this right here, there is a two-thousand-dollar penalty. If they don't, if they violate the, the rules.
We'll make them donate the penalty to the charities.
That, that charity will go to function quickly, I'm gonna tell you. Especially if it's for each violation, then two people together, that's four thousand. Alright, um, all those in favor? Approved. Alright, any other business, non-agenda items that anybody wants to mention? Going backwards, second public comment. State your name and address, please.
Jeremy Caston, three-ten Blackberry Hill Road. Uh, I just wanted to, uh, clarify and, and make sure, um, that I kind of took a moment to, to say this because, um, I think, uh, most of you, Linda, I know you weren't there at the, um, conjoined meeting or whatever the other night.
Oh, I, no, but I watched the.
I'm sure you did, yeah, and so I, I just wanted to touch on it, I'm sure you're aware that for the last several years, I've been checking in, trying to educate myself with the planning board, um, and get up to speed a little bit as a citizen and also just as a, you know, member of the community who cares about the direction Berwick may go in and have seen, um, pressures, development pressures in other places change the town, the tenor of towns very quickly. And so, uh, in large part, the effort with the, um, uh, um, I don't know why I'm blanking, the, uh, the, the design standards guide that, that is in front of you, uh, comes from that. And so I just wanted to be clear from, from, from my perspective and also from, you know, other folks that sort of I've worked with on this and, and people that, that, where, where these discussions, where this was gestating, right? The idea of limiting people from bringing business is the opposite of what I think, not just the intention, but having read deeply into other towns', um, design standards and such. The idea of saying not just, here's what we like, here's hoping, is to prevent some giant corporation or someone who just doesn't care from showing up and, and presenting something to the town or pushing something through that quickly changes things in a way that is very difficult to attract. And, and as I was following the discussion earlier tonight, it sounded like that was exactly, and I just wanna make sure I understand, exactly what you were getting at and that you were backing up is sort of this, like, well, if we can't cover everything, then what are we doing? Fear, and I just wanted to understand that because it goes back to something that, that I was talking about at the meeting the other night, which is that, that so much of what I've come to understand we are doing is reactionary to what we see in other places, what we see in Route One when you go to the, go to Logan and you see all, all over America now, right? Where, where corporations come in and they impose their sort of will on a town that didn't protect itself enough appropriately and found a loophole or said like, well, you didn't protect yourself this way, so now we're gonna do this to you. Is, is that, I really worry that, that there isn't, we do not have rules, something in place from legal or planning or, or, or someone that's protecting us from that eventuality because we can imagine, as you said earlier tonight, we can imagine every possibility and we're still not gonna think of everyone. So, how do we protect ourselves from that? And, and I think it's, it's an important thing for us all to be thinking about because it will come. It, that, it, there is an inevitability to this for all, all rural communities on the edge of town, of cities, right? It's an important consideration and, and I don't have an answer, but I think it's something that we, we need to be thinking about, right? Just wanted to sort of posit that.
I, I agree in the sense that, but I almost think the opposite in the sense that you say we shouldn't be driven by fear, but yet you're telling us that you're afraid that the big bad companies are gonna come in and so we should do everything to prevent now. I just worry that there needs to be that line somewhere that says, you're right. I don't wanna see Walmart or a large corporation dropped in downtown Berwick either. But yet I don't want it to be so restrictive that any developer looking even to make small business investments looks at us and goes, yeah, they're so restrictive, they are so anti-business. I'm gonna go, there's plenty of places that I can go and we're closing the door. And so, there is that fine line of balance.
Balance.
And, and that's what we're trying to achieve in that. And, and I agree with that because you're right, I don't want someone to slip it in a loophole either. But I just, and what I see is it's so restrictive, someone's going to just shake their head and go, why don't I just?
I'll go over to Elliot.
Yeah, I'm gonna pop over to Elliot or North Berwick.
So, Elliot's a great example. We don't allow what Elliot allows. We already have signage standards in Berwick that would not allow that Dunkin' Donuts with the giant TV advertising their sales. And so, Elliot is a much more money town and you can all agree, there's, there are property there that, 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 you know, their median income is a lot higher and that they have a lot of property that's very, very valuable. And what they've done is with great intentionality, it seems to me, said, this is our two-thirty-six, let whatever happen and we're not gonna control that and we're gonna let that be an economic driver for what that is to protect everything over here. That's a choice too. But there were definitely, in my opinion, having not been in those rooms, there were definitely meetings in rooms where people made those choices. And what I am asking, as a citizen, that I want to be very clear, like, separate and aside, although we talk about this a great deal within Envision Berwick, as a citizen, I'm just asking that, that all of us, citizens included and really more than even the planning board and the select board because you, there, it's a limited amount of time and people have to do their part. We need to think about what our plan is. We have to be intentional and make those plans. And if, if there are parts of town that we want, we do want a Walmart, we should make those decisions. But we have to make them and not let it happen to us. And that's, that's really.
But that is what the planning board and the select board are for. You're basically saying, I mean, to me, my impression is, I don't want, I don't want the planning board to be snowed over or the select board, so we're gonna make this so strict so they can't sneak in. And I think that we have, I mean, I, we're kind of on the same page. I just think we need to, to maybe sharpen that balance up a little bit more, that's all.
I think it bears a lot of discussion and I think that there's not a lot of time, but we need to find the time to make, to make, to make these choices and decisions and discussions. Because when you don't, stuff happens without intention.
And, and a lot of what we're talking about with the design standards and what we want to see Berwick is, a lot of that is being driven directly from the comprehensive plan. Not just the comprehensive plan now, but the comprehensive plan that was before that and the comprehensive plan they're working on now is, that has been laid out over the years and the vast majority of people have been polled and asked and everything, all come back is that we need to protect what we have in Berwick.
Has the comprehensive plan ever gone out to the public for a vote?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Every, every new plan is voted on.
Every new plan.
Yeah.
And, and the plans are informed by the public and they, there's usually polls taken and public comments.
We're just about to start another survey. Surveys going out this week for agriculture, for the cop plan because those surveys are, are exactly what it's written from. Learning from people what they believe is important.
Right, and, and I agree with you, but I mean, we're, we're upping the number of people who can have, you know, we, we're saying that we're bringing in one type of business and we keep expanding that type of business, but yet we're putting restrictions on, you know, what if I wanted to open a craft store on Route Four between North Berwick and South Berwick? You know, um, I, I've gotta come here and say, well, I can't build what I want, I've gotta come in here and build what the select board or the planning board tells me I gotta build. Uh, and I'm not saying that we want.
It's not the select board or the planning board because it's all voted on by the town. It's what the town votes for.
If, if the town says they don't want these design standards as a whole, then they'll tell us. They told us no before.
Okay.
So, if, if, if the town, well, I mean, obviously this is all public record, people can go look at it, we can, it'll be public before the vote and everything like that. People can make a decision if they want those design standards or not. And if they don't, then they won't pass.
Right, and I, I agree with putting recommendations, like you said, put recommendations out so we can steer the town in the direction we want. But there's a difference between recommendations and restrictions, or you cannot have.
By saying not acceptable, you're giving yourself an opportunity to have some teeth and, and otherwise it's, it will be a document that, that people say, well, it says that's what you'd like, but it doesn't say I have to do that, and so you're trying to find a way, say. And, and at some point, you know, you could argue, does it come down to taste? If you look at what the design, what the design standards are, are, are positing, it's, it's stuff like, you know, a thousand-foot wall with no windows, like, that's, that, in no world is that attractive except a modern art exhibit or something, you know what I mean? Like, I, 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 I also agree that the last thing that we want is to slow down economic progress in Berwick. I think it's really important to be really clear about that. But none of these design standards are written from whole cloth. They all come from neighboring towns that are economically viable and successful. So, that's why they, it seemed wise to look at what other towns do to protect themselves.
And I do agree with that as well. I mean, obviously Portsmouth is not struggling to maintain their downtown standards, you know, and they have a very beautiful downtown that has strict design standards, so.
But right.
Here, I'll play devil's advocate for a second.
For existing buildings.
I'll, I'll play devil's advocate for a second. Portsmouth has a city council. So, if we put this to vote and people look at this and say, I think that's too restrictive, and they tell us, no. All that work Jeremy just did, not just Jeremy, but collectively, goes out the window. And that's where me looking at it to say, hey, that not acceptable is my watch out, again, doesn't sway me.
Sure.
But you got thirty-one-hundred registered voters, that ten percent will ideally show up because they'll forget that there's an election. Um, but, um, that you're putting that in the hands of. And, and that's sometimes what we gotta think about, what that, that verbage. Because again, we can always get it this way and then readjust if we need to.
Yep.
You know, so, that's, that's that.
I just wanted to get out in front of it and directly.
No, no, correct, and, and I think, you know, cause you, you said it the other night too with, and, and, and I think the opposite where you're like, oh, the, the fear of, oh, some lawyer's gonna find the loophole. I don't think it's that, I think me, it's from me, at least to reassure you, cause I absolutely agree. I want standards and, and you know, I try to volunteer in the cop plan too and see that and preserve what we can. I think of it too as, what are the residents in the town gonna see on paper and feel fits them? And not just the ones that are actively volunteering, but the ones that do get out that once, once a year and kind of, oh, we're voting on this, I don't really know about that. And go the other way and, and put something presentable so that they understand.
I think that's why it's also important to say that everything that already exists.
Is already there.
Whatever exists on nine, two-thirty-six and four will, will always exist be, a, a, as they are, right? That they're grandfathered in and somebody who has a business, nobody's gonna show up and say, you have to put on a new roof because it doesn't follow the design standard.
Correct.
In fact, what we're saying in the document in a lot of cases is, you need to look around at what's already there so that what you're building, your new construction, fits in with what's, what is currently there.
Agreed, and, and we know it's in this room and Mike and you, you know, they, they know. And we have the same planners that come ahead when something, you know, so they, they generally know, yes, it needs to fit that town, it needs to fit that neighborhood, it needs to fit those neighborhoods. I just, again, my caution is just, what's that verbage when it goes out to, you know, Sally who doesn't know that we're already doing this?
That's legitimate, I, I understand that.
And again, I'm on the same page with you too. I just.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I, I just try to walk that, that ground sometimes, to think both ways. Sometimes I have to take my hat off here and I think about it, not just my personal opinion on the other side, but what my neighbor thinks or down-the-street thinks, so.
Did I answer your questions, Linda, as it relates to that?
You answered my question.
Okay. How about you, Lisa?
How's that?
We'll, we'll be talking more shortly, I'm soon, as soon I'm sure.
Yep. Thank you for allowing me to, uh, jump in on that.
Not a problem. Do you have a com, a comment?
They just do this.
Two-sixty-three Pine Hill Road. So, one of our big examples, uh, we're not trying to limit who does stuff on the, in the town, we're trying to limit what it looks like. So, case in point is at Freeport McDonald's.
That's great.
That is not a normal McDonald's, but it fits that area well. So, if a big store wanted to come in here, great. We just want them to look a certain way that doesn't make them look like a big box store. If they add faux windows like at Haniford's in North Berwick to break up the wall, that's, that's perfect. Stuff like that is what we're looking for. It's not like we're saying, no, Walmart can't be here. It's more or less, you can be here, but we just want you to look like you fit in the town, not just some big box that just, is just sitting there. You know, that was like our whole, what, what our feedback from everyone that has come in into the planning board and kind of helped with this, that's been like the feedback that we've been given.
But you just said that and that thirty-second thing was a better description than the impression I got from this.
Okay.
And so when you take that out to the voters, you might want to, to say that. Okay, cause what you, because this seems very restrictive and we just don't want you here.
Yeah.
That's what it comes across as.
Yeah, it's not that we don't want you here, it's we want you to fit within our guidelines to make our town look better.
In our guidelines, again, are designed to come into the, but that's, again, when you get the, the general public who looks at this, they're gonna say, geez, they don't want any businesses here, they're making it so restrictive. And it's not, what you just said is, it's not that they couldn't come here. It's that if they're going to build a business here, it needs to be, you know, somewhat in confined with the rest of the thing, but it's not that it's unwelcome into new business.
Yeah.
Okay.
That was really good. Thank you.
Alright, we have an executive session, so I will, we're not gonna make any votes in executive session, so we'll be coming out of it.
Thank you.
And so, this will be effectively the end of the live portion of the meeting. Anybody have anything else to add before we go offline? Alright, I move that we go into executive session under Title 1405-6A for discussion personnel. All those in favor?